I swam over.
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry.
Right, all right.
Your mic's not up.
All right, it being 6:02, I call this January 16th meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission to order. Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Kulisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioners Lottis.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Corbin and Jagiella are absent and we have one vacancy.
Okay, but we do have a quorum. There we go. Thank you, Ray. As long as you're up, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I found that coming. Ready? Be gone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Ray. Next item on the agenda is public communications. The time set aside during the planning commission meeting for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission, will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda, and other than for emergency items, no action can be taken. I don't see anyone but Jeremy back there. Is there anyone in the House who would like to speak during public communications? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent item. The minutes of the regular meeting of the planning commission, December 5th, and I presume we've all been through it, I would entertain a motion with regard to those minutes.
I will make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the planning commission meeting of December 5th, 2018.
A second, and I just have one comment. There was under the Tesla, item two, it's just a request if it could be done, where are the, where there's questions? So at the end Commissioner Corbin asked a question about who's, is it, is it within protocol or what staff can do in terms of provide the answer to those questions when they come up? Because I, just when I'm reading, it's just nice to have like the full summary of what happened.
Yeah, I think probably, yeah, short answers to questions.
Yes, very short, yeah.
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying not to become too verbose in the minutes.
Exactly.
But Sherri, if you could take care of that.
Just as a comment for the future, that's all.
Okay, and would you accept that as?
Oh, yes, I, yes, I mean, it's fine as it is, I just, it came up when I was reading through and I just wanted to.
Request for future minutes.
Make a request for future minutes, not necessarily to change this.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion of the motion to accept the minutes? Then let's have a roll call, Sherri.
Lottis?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Kulisi?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Great, okay. Item two, planning commission appointment to the committee to approve public art. Interestingly, I didn't know this, I didn't realize there was a planning commissioner on that committee, but it's been John Merck and forever, and now John Merck is not with us on the commission sadly, and we should appoint another member of the planning commission to serve a two-year term on the committee to approve public art. Could we hear from staff first?
Yes, thank you, commission. Like you just pointed out, John Merck has served on Kappa for quite a while and Kappa was very appreciative of him and sad to see him go, but they're excited about who they will get to work with next. Essentially, the role Kappa plays is that projects that are subject to public art, public art projects, and there's an ordinance specific to public art projects, those projects are reviewed by this committee, which is made up of a planning commissioner and then a couple of the arts commissioners, and they're reviewed both as a concept and then they, after the committee approves, reviews them, approves them, and then, once the projects are built and put in, there's also a site visit and a final approval, just to make sure it matches up to the concept. The Kappa does meet, they don't have a standard scheduled meeting, so we tend to, when a project comes in, we try to find a time that meets for everybody, or that works for everybody, but there won't be like just a once-a-month standard meeting. And we have three pending projects right now. The Sane Center has a piece of public art that was approved by the Kappa with John Merck, but it needs to be final signed, sign-off. The Ojai Valley Inn has the farmhouse tables going in as well, and there is a third project, Kappa, public art. I'm blanking on the third one, but there's, there's three pending projects at this moment that, oh, the gates at the museum, I don't know how I could have forgotten those, but yeah, which are installed, but the Kappa still has to do the final review of those.
Oh, it's even been in the newspaper already, I don't know what they would do at this point.
They did the grand opening, yeah. They're 99% there, there's a couple of trim pieces that different Kappa members had asked to be completed before we do the final sign-off. So those three projects are pending as we speak, we're probably going to try to start meeting in the next couple of weeks on those, but this is actually probably as busy as it gets, we typically have maybe one or two projects a year that go through Kappa.
I've been, I've been following city council, which follows Kappa for a long time, and it's rare that you hear anything about Kappa.
Yeah.
Most of the public art is a result of commercial development, which we don't have a whole lot of, or in the case of the museum, I guess, development on PL.
Yeah.
Property. But it's, it ought to be a fun thing to do if you're interested in public art and, and want to occasionally dip your toe into another meeting on behalf of the city. Is anyone here interested in doing that?
I have a question.
Sure.
I could possibly be interested, or I am a little bit. I don't want to overextend myself because I know I do Complete Streets already, but I am interested, but the question that I had is occasionally, I'll be involved with one of the projects that come through, not, you know, it's occasionally, and I'm guessing I would have to recuse myself, wouldn't I, if it came through, if I was involved with the project?
I could see a situation where you'd have to recuse.
Yeah, so I may, yeah, okay. So I don't know.
Well, but you do, you do landscape architecture, and, and public art is a separate thing. One, one might envision some sort of a, a conflict, but it would be a real stretch for me to figure that.
The one that jumps out to me is that the business owners, are the developers, sometimes do come in and ask for time extensions, for approval to pay the fee in lieu of performing the public art, and I could see an argument that if you're working for that developer that you shouldn't be part of that.
Oh, you'd be inclined to grant the delay.
Right. So I, I just thought, well, you know, is that, could that potentially be a problem? And if there's only, I mean, not that I'm involved in every project, commercial project, I'm not, but one of the ones that you just mentioned, I am, so, yeah, it might be better for somebody else to.
However, you would still have a quorum, right?
We'd still have a quorum, Kappa.
I mean, it's only three members, but one out of three would be the.
We'd still have a quorum, Kappa has a preference, and I, you know, I've explained to them that it's not a requirement, but they have a preference that they, they like to meet with all three, so because there's no like set timeframes, they'll say, we'll wait a couple of days to get all three together, so I don't know their inclination to, to move forward with two out of three. I do think it would happen very infrequently, but.
And there's never been a conflict of interest situation prior?
There hasn't, John's been on for as long as I can remember, or longer than I've been here, obviously, and, and he'd never had one in that time.
Well, practically speaking, practically speaking, though, it could work. I mean, it's not, it's not impossible, and you would still have a quorum, and you could still take a vote and, and reach a resolution.
Yeah.
With one member recusing.
Recusing, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it really comes down to yes or no, are you interested in, in taking that seat?
I think I'm going to pass because I, I may potentially, I'm thinking of some other commercial projects that I may be involved in, and I think it would be better to have someone who more reliably would be present for their meetings.
I'm not detecting tremendous enthusiasm on the rest of the commission.
I, I'm, I am enthusiastic, however, I might.
About taking that position.
But, no, I am, but, and I would be having to recuse myself because I'm foreseeing, I'm foreseeing being involved with submitting some public art projects.
Well, that would definitely be a conflict, yes, uh-huh.
So, I don't want to do that.
Do we have any indication that, that either of the absent commissioners tonight would not be here on the 6th? I, I don't think we have any notice of that yet.
No.
I'd, I'd feel better about postponing the decision until we have all six of us here and two more candidates for the slot.
That sounds good.
I'll also think more about the conflict of interest question because I am having some kind of second thoughts about it, so I'll, we'll think more about that, we'll have, we'll have.
If Ray, if Ray is in a position to submit potential public art.
That one's problematic.
That's a very clear potential conflict. But, okay, then I would, I would recommend that we table this until the next meeting. Do we need a vote on that?
No.
Okay, we'll continue this item to the next meeting then.
I thought we just assigned someone that wasn't here. Since they're.
That, that happens a lot, and then you, you wind up with unhappy people.
By the way.
All right, well, our next, our next agenda item is future agenda items. The Planning Commissioners Academy, March 6th through the 8th in Long Beach. We have two of our commissioners already registered. I think that's, I think we had three the last time.
Is it too late to, I know I haven't registered because I, I'll wait till you stand.
Sure. I think I can. You can do it on comments on the next item.
My, my schedule for the next two months is sufficiently uncertain that I don't want to commit the city to paying for a registration for me for this year. And so I'm, I'm not in a position to, to go to that particular academy is, and I know Kathy L., you've already signed up. Are you interested in doing that sort of thing, Ray?
Not this year.
Okay.
I'm interested. I just had, I was kind of waiting because of my work schedule.
Yeah.
So Sherri, there's still time to, to sign up, not too late. Okay, I'll, I'll just have to finalize everything.
I think, I think last year was Bobby and John and I went. And in the interest of conserving city resources, you know, if we keep it to three, that's probably plenty for any given, for any given meeting.
You mean the year before, probably? Wasn't last year when we missed the deadline on registration or something when it was in Monterey?
For a, a different event, it wasn't for the academy training, it was for a different separate one that wasn't approved by the.
I remember going down to a hotel somewhere near LAX for this meeting, for the academy, last year. Okay.
Long Beach is much nicer.
Pardon me?
Long Beach is much nicer.
It's very bike.
If it's, if it's at the convention center, I've been there on aerospace stuff several times, but if it's, the hotels are equally nice. There's a Marriott, there's a Weston, there's a Hilton down there, I think, that are all very top-end. All right, item four then, planning commissioner, so, so we will, we will revisit the Planning Commissioners Academy at the next meeting if there's still time to register by the 6th of February.
All right, it fills up sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or perhaps, Sherri, you could send an email to the two commissioners that are not with us tonight and just ask.
I already.
Of course, you have done that, really, yeah. So the likelihood is that both of them would say no.
Okay.
Because they haven't said yes yet. Right, but the others?
The only other is Chester, isn't it?
Oh, that's right, yes, so Chester's the only other one, right, okay, then, that's right, one's already signed up. All right, well, let's go on to item four then, planning commission, committee reports and comments. We have you down, vice chair, as talking about the city council on the 8th of January.
Yes, and I was hoping to go over my notes before I came, but I was organizing my office, and of course, when I'm organizing, I can't find anything, but at the last minute, I found it, so I didn't get to review. So pardon me if I pause every so often. There was a wonderful presentation by the Clean Power Alliance, and I'm sure many of you have received a postcard in the mail, providing information on that, I think it's a very exciting, Michelle Ellison did that presentation. Let's see, I'm just going to do a brief one, oh, I just wanted to mention this, and the sheriff got up and spoke, this is before all the rain potentially had started this last week, and he had mentioned that right after the fire last year, it was deemed that if we got a half an inch of rain per hour, that would mean that there would be evacu, mandatory evacuations, but he said they had gone out with, I believe it was a geologist recently, you know, and combed the hillsides and due to the amount of plant regrowth, regeneration, it's now at three-quarters of an inch per hour. So just in case in the event, so interestingly enough, like I got a, a notice yesterday for voluntary evacuation and to pack your bags and be ready for mandatory, so I was, but we never had that three-quarters of an inch, so.
No, no.
My bags are still packed, just in case, but anyway, I just thought that was, you know, good to know.
It's nice to see that they do change.
Yes.
The criteria for evacuation based on regrowth.
Actual, yeah, information. Let me see what else that I've got here. I know this might, this might pertain to us, but council member Wyerick pulled for discussion, the, or for a motion for next meeting, and this was the discussion on planning commission, commissioner terms and absences, so I'm not sure where that's going to go, but I thought we might want to know that.
He may wish to tell us tonight.
Okay, and then they also went over the study session for adoption of the 2016 California Building Code and Amendments allowing for Increased Fire Protection, and discussion was about Class 8 roofs, reinforcement for property maintenance, a maintenance code that might come up in a future meeting, and, my writing's so small, I can't even read it, but anyway, that was, that was important. And the other thing that came up was the invasive species tree policy which passed, and Greg Grant, our Public Works Director, did the presentation on that, and that had to do predominantly with Mexican fan palms, and an arrangement where they would like to work with adjacent property owners to reduce the seed bank of Mexican fan palms adjacent to city property, and that passed. And let's see here, oh, this also came up, and that was a discussion about zoning text amendment for conditionally allowable uses in the M1 and MPT, MPD zoning, and that, let me see if I wrote anything else on that, just can't remember exactly what came up with that. Do you remember exactly what the final?
It was a request from the Airstream Trailer Park folk.
Right, but it wasn't.
To, to be able to have events where alcohol is served.
Like in hotel motel, short-term lodging.
Like a hotel motel, where they could do it themselves rather than having to get a special event permit.
That's right.
And get someone to cater, which they have done on a few occasions in the past.
Right, and, and even though they did present it, it wasn't for them specifically, it would be.
No, they were looking for.
Potentially zoning for, yeah, the entire area.
And what was the upshot of that?
Oh, and if I, now that I remember, I believe it was Council Member Wyerick who had said something about doing a kind of an area.
It got shut down.
That got shot down, yeah, it went back and forth.
It got shut down.
I thought it was a good one, but, okay.
I read that and I thought to myself, you know, a, a pilot project.
A test.
Of limited duration might have been a possibility, but.
All right, let me just.
So far, nothing, right?
No, something happened.
Okay, and let's see, all right.
Stephanie has, we did take action in some way.
It's Suzanne, and there we go, thank you, go ahead. The M1 MPD will come before the planning commission as a staff report to discuss the text amendment on a future agenda item.
Okay, there we go, thank you.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it on the future agenda items, so.
Mr. Conley and I were discussing that this morning.
Good.
And we are tentatively looking at February 6th, but we have not confirmed that date yet.
Good, good.
Good.
There also, also interesting that was brought up, being sure of the Complete Streets, was that they wanted to bring the ATP grant back on January 22nd to council for final discussion, so we'll have to see what happens with that, and.
That, that is currently scheduled for the 22nd.
Oh, it is scheduled, okay, good. Then another thing was also to bring back was the signal summer stop sign, to bring that back to council for community input. There's also, and I believe, you can correct me if this got scheduled or not, but they were asking for, on February 12th, a Creek Road presentation, this had to do with, you know, traffic, volume, speed, accidents and what have you, even though it's not within the city limit.
It's not within the city limits and not under the control of the city council.
No, but they, I think that the reason they were bringing it was because people are going to Ojai, people are coming from Ojai, and adjacency and context, I believe, so.
Just on a lark, I, I went to Google Maps and asked for a route from my home down to somewhere in Camarillo, and it told me not to go down 33, but to zigzag through town till I could get to Creek Road.
Right.
And then try to make that near, near fatal left turn onto 33 South from Creek Road.
Yeah, you hit on one of the things, is, some, some ideas were tossed around to kind of discuss further at that February meeting, and, you know, a couple of them that were thrown out were, you know, contacting Google and seeing if they would remove it.
That's right.
And us contacting them as the city, even though it's not in the city, so.
Right, and then the other thing was the, the council actually, you know, voted and agreed on council representatives to local county and regional boards, that took place also, and I think that's generally what I had in my notes, with a couple of other things that I wrote too small.
Okay.
Which isn't a good excuse, but it's true.
Well, thank you for that. Next meeting, we will have two reports, Mr. Powers on the city council meeting next week, and Ms. Nolan, and as Sherri pointed out to me, the MAC meeting is actually January 21st, not the 18th.
Oh, and that's going to be for me, correct?
That's for you, yeah. It's at tab four in your book.
Is it all of it? Oh, tab four.
Oh, January 21st, I'll bet is President's Day.
For Martin Luther King Day.
Or Martin, oh.
So will they cancel that then?
Oh, President's Day is February, that's right.
Okay, good, I just want to make a note to myself, just a question mark that I may have.
Email Steve.
Okay.
Yeah, or, yeah, Steve Offerman will know whether they're going to have the meeting or not. And if they cancel, then you're up for the next MAC meeting. Great, great times. All right, and we have arrived at the highlight of our session.
I think you're presaging me, is that right? Okay, I'll be quick, I know, we want to get out before 6:30 maybe, anyway, unless you have questions, I'm sorry, the name, I get alliteration, psychosis in my head. Getting old, my memory is not like. Psychosis in my head. I'm getting old, my memory is not like.
Age, age-related, yes.
Have you noticed that? You know, certain quick details just aren't there.
It doesn't run nearly as fast as it used to, Bill.
At the risk of going past 6:30, I do want to say that yesterday's meeting appeal before the board of supervisors, I'm not sure how everybody else felt about it, I was really proud to be a citizen of Ojai. Proud of our staff, proud of the volunteers, the concerns, you know, it's, it's what this city stands for, and I'm so proud that we do in terms of integrity in the process for environmental review and, and SEQA, public deliberation. And calling out frankly, some questionable tactics or protocols on the part of county planning. I think that's, there's only, that's all we can say about it. And change happens when people step up and say something. It was a split vote. Nevertheless, I thought we acquitted ourselves well, as well as the people from Sea Frog that were there and other people. But there are some real systemic issues raised when you see county planning, and frankly, theories of the primacy of staff judgment over general plan provisions over, which, which ultimately, in my view, disenfranchises citizens because general plans are established by public process and approved by elected officials.
Not to mention disenfranchising the board of supervisors.
Yes, well, elected officials, and staff basically saying, we can just decide it's, the provision is not significant on our own, without public process.
For the sake of those who may watch this and don't know what topic you're speaking of.
The appeal of the Bentley Oil Field. Modified CUP for an additional 20 years of operation with a full-time flare after operating for, what, close to 10 years? 16 years in violation of their CUP. So again, it, it, the importance is not the Bentley family and their, you know, and what they do. What's important is the integrity of how we protect environmental quality in this valley and in the county as a whole, and how we protect the integrity of the, of public deliberation and public processes.
It has to be not just fair, but obviously fair.
Right, and, and public accountability. So I, I was, I was, I, I was very happy. I, I know, I don't know if, if you wrote, sold a write-up in the Ventura County Star, which more or less was fair, I guess, I don't know what, you know. But nevertheless, you know, we have a situation where we took issue with some of the processes associated with protecting the integrity of the, of the character of this valley and, and how it's impacted by review processes. Remember, this is the, the same county planning and legal process that for years asserted that short-term rentals were legal because we were just going to call them accessory uses. I'm saying we in terms of county planning, no public process, no public deliberation, no public hearings, just, well, until supervisors do anything, it's legal because there are short-term rentals and accessory use. I can't find anyone else in the state that came up with that theory. I'm being very frank because, as you can say, I'm a little irritated.
It's only wrong if you get caught.
Huh? Well, so I think that it's, it, 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 it shows the, I think, a healthy interplay between cities and counties. And I think, again, I think it was worth every penny of taxpayer dollars for us to pursue this appeal. And document the, the situation. I mean, some people may take issue with that, but it, it's really not about the Bentley family and their partnership and their, and their ranch, and they are absolutely wonderful stewards of the land and longtime residents of, of this valley and, and integral members of our community, but there was a better way to deal with this process, and that's really what we were appealing. So enough said of that, but I just thought it, it was worth saying in this venue, you know. James, did you have anything to change or add to what I said, or?
Though, I, one thing that hit me afterwards, I was bitter about it for a little bit, but one thing that hit me was that our issue from the beginning has been the lack of analysis and information on this.
Right.
And something they said a few times yesterday, we did additional analysis in response to the city's request.
Exactly.
And we disputed some of that analysis. Still, we had Dr. Colome there, and, and he, you know, poked some holes in some of it. But it wasn't a waste of time.
No, just to get the, even if it was a flawed analysis, they were forced to do the analysis.
Yeah, they did, you know, air quality, traffic measures, all, all those things, and that's why.
They had to do some heroic massaging of what the baseline was to get there.
Yeah.
But it, you know, again, I think you're, you're exactly right. We were, we, just by forcing them to go through the exercise is a first process, I think, in putting some better accountability into the system.
Set a standard for the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah, letting people know that, that the citizens are watching what they do.
And our little city continues to have an outside impact, I think, for the good on this county as a whole.
Yeah.
And it's because of the quality of our citizens, you know, that stand, you know, that stand together with these concerns. So I'm really proud of our city, you know, frankly.
I agree. I watched the whole thing, and the city, all the city representatives, anybody who spoke for the city, did an outstanding job. And there was a lot of problems in terms of getting documentation. The county posted a staff report at approximately 8 o'clock, I believe it was Monday night. It appeared, and then it disappeared. And so it makes it extremely difficult, and you wonder how does this happen?
Right.
But it makes it extremely difficult for anybody to actually really have documentation to base comments on that are based in, in some sort of fact.
And they didn't even post the city's letter. They did, they, it's very erratic about even posting the city's, the la, the second city's letter, the appeal of the city.
Right, that was hidden, the city's most recent submittal was hidden. And, and also, I think there was a lot of obfuscation going on in terms of what the, the baseline, the whole commentary about baseline was related to SEQA.
Yep.
However, when you are reviewing a conditional use permit, the project is the project.
You're not supposed to piecemeal.
It's, it's, it's in, it's a hierarchy.
They were piecemealing as an art form.
And, and there is no grandfathering going on.
Right.
The entire project, it was a de novo hearing, all of it was under review, and there was no setting aside anything that had been occurring for the last 20 years or whatever.
Right.
All up for review, it's supposed to be based on current information, what's going on, what are the current laws, what are, what, what has changed over the last 20 years.
Right.
Anyway, that was, I was really upset by that, but, yeah.
So I think it was worth the exercise. I guess that's what I'm, I'm saying to Commissioner Luddy, so I think it was worth getting all of that on the record and putting a little sunlight on it. You know, even though we ultimately had our appeal denied, but I tell you, 3-2 split. And I think one of the, one of the supervisors was on the fence.
Well.
So, anyway.
You have to take baby steps sometimes.
Yes.
But the next time this situation arises, if it does, I think people are on notice, there's going to be a lot more public scrutiny of what goes on.
And, and, yeah, I think we, yeah, absolutely, you know, because we are stewards of this entire valley. Even, we have, even with the limited city limits, and I very much believe that, given our special role as defined by LAFCO in terms of the sphere of influence and the area of interest. And I, I take that seriously, I think it's been neglected for a while, but I think that we're, we are asserting that role of being stewards of the valley as a whole, and that's not a shame to say it, you know. And then coming up, yes, I pulled the attendance report because it wasn't an action item. And there was discussion at our joint meeting about maybe a need to make some text amendments in terms of how we look at, you know, membership and stuff.
At least define what an excused absence is, please.
Well, so, we will be discussing whether we take action on any of the attendance issues. That's up to council to decide whether to take ad action or not.
Absolutely, yeah.
And also to look at the, a text amendment to the, the foundation elements of the planning commission, namely the, the, the terms and the definition of the, of the, of the members, you know.
The composition of the commission, yeah.
Right. So I just wanted to say, yes, that is coming up, and we'll see how it plays out.
Is all of that coming at the meeting next week?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, it will.
We'll look forward to seeing.
We'll see how, how it, how it plays out, and then hopefully you're going to have a busy year. And, you know, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of issues coming before this commission this year. I can, I mean.
Well, we can, no, we can, we can see it.
Oh, I can't wait till the chaperone school asks for a rezon.
There are, there's a whole list of topics here, if you go to our tab three.
I looked at that, too.
And I, I compliment staff again, and Luke in particular, for presenting things, topics that are of interest to the commission and what the status is between the commission and the city council.
Right.
So that we can do what we can to influence things.
Again, I appreciate, you know, the time you put in, it's important, it's part of how we govern our, our beautiful city.
Sure.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any last comments by any commission member?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Bill. I was very curious, I didn't get to watch it or attend last night at the appeal, and onward and upward. I guess I have a question, if, God forbid, something occur like a, a gas truck crash or something. I mean, is there any evidentiary circumstances that might occur where it would come up to revoke that decision? Pipe breaks, truck goes over, something? How does that?
There's, there's going to be legal liability in any case, but I think once a CUP is granted, it sticks to that part, that property for whatever the term of that CUP is. And that, that would be very difficult to overturn.
One of the things we had asked for at different points was a shorter period, because right now, what they approved was a 20-year extension. And for a variety of reasons, we had concerns about that, but, but that's what ended up getting approved, it's through 2035.
Okay.
Well.
I wasn't planning to ask that, but after hearing Mr. Wyerick, I wanted to ask that. I just have a brief announcement about something that's coming up, and I wanted to publicly speak it, and that's a, it's, it's an event that's being hosted by the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And it's called Fire Safe and Earthquake Resilient Home Design. I will actually be facilitating that panel discussion, there'll also be presentations. It's on Sunday, January 27th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Matilla Junior High Auditorium at 703 El Paso Road. I'm just reading here so I can give you a flavor of what's going to happen. Ventura County and the Ojai Valley has the opportunity to become a leader in creating pilot projects that serve as an example of fire-safe and earthquake-resilient structures suitable for Southern California today. I want to insert that, you know, we, because of the fires, we're looking at fires, fi- fire safety mostly. But in actuality, earthquakes can cause a lot more damage than a fire can, and we never know when those are coming. And, you know, even, even people really schooled in building codes say, you know, you want to build to what the next iteration of an earthquake code might be, because they're, they're constantly changing every time there's a quake, and, you know, even up in Oregon, they just found a new fault up there. And, you know, it's, natural disasters are kind of like insurance, it's based on a big if. But preparedness is also a good thing to have. So this event on Jan- January 27th, Fire Safe and Earthquake Resilient Home Design will offer tips and guidelines for residents looking to build safely in an environment proven to be susceptible to wild, violent earthquakes. Experts in the field will give presentations and discuss topics such as this resiliency building method such as reinforced adobe, straw bale, rammed earth, and other building materials that are, you know, renewable, recyclable, and also proven, I'm going to say traditional building, because traditionally, our ancestors built in these ways, are, are, last for hundreds of years and don't break down as, as quickly as timber-built homes. And then the pros and cons of our current Ventura County building codes, and the cost-effectiveness or not of natural building methods and the environmental advantages of these approaches. So I'm really excited, I personally am producing this event and facilitating it with the graces of the Green Coalition. And we have an amazing panel, Art Ludwig of Oasis Designs, who's one of the pioneers and gurus of reinforced, well, gray water first, a lot of people know him for that, but he, he's actually working with the county on reinforced adobe walls. And next month, through a grant with Cal Poly, they're doing seismic testing on this material to produce hard data, how it will hold up with earthquakes. And then Sasha Rabine from Quail Springs Fermacultural Center, which is where they're going to be doing that testing, and they've already built some adobe and cob and straw bale up there. Dustin Kalili from Cal Earth, some people may, may know of his father, Nader Kalili. They have in Temecula, they're building super adobe structures, he's going to be there. Jane Carroll, who's a local architectural designer, she built, designed the straw bale and council house up in, with the living roof up at Ojai Foundation, and those are two of the structures that survived the fire up there on the Ojai Foundation. She's part of the panel, Mayor Johnny Johnston's going to be on it, and also Matt Wyatt, who's the Ventura County Building and Safety District Manager Two of District Two, is going to be on it. So we're hoping it gives a broad overview of fire-safe and earthquake-resilient home design, and it'll be the first in a series of four, looking at our current conventions and what we can change and possible code update and like that. And there'll be Q and A, each presenter will also do a visual presentation, and then we'll have a panel discussion, so thanks for your time, I know that was a bit lengthy.
Very good. Well, it sounds like they'll be covering a lot of topics that people in the city should be interested in. Any other announcements or comments or anything? Barring that, at 6:47, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.